Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November televised Wallingford Board of Education Meeting, and I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Levesque, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso? Mrs. Levesque?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much. So we've got a nice audience tonight. I just want to take a moment, and I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and lots of turkey, and now back to reality with salads tonight. So with that, student board reps, is Audrey here tonight for Lyman Hall? Hey, Audrey, how are you? Come on up. Good. Did you have a good Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Good. Glad to hear it. What's going on at Lyman Hall?
All right, in the past month, some exciting things have occurred at Lyman Hall. On October 25th, our girls' swimming and diving team defeated Sheen 113 to 68. On October 26th, our girls' volleyball team defeated Wilbur Cross. On October 26th, our field hockey team also defeated Shelton 2 to 0. On October 27th, our football team won 35 to 0 against the Krick Co-Hop. On November 22nd, our swimming and diving team members Christina Driscoll, Caroline Croweck, Faith Gambardella, and Sarah Beveridge set a new LH record for the 200 medley relay, while Croweck also set a new record for the 100-meter breaststroke. Meredith DeNegris and Luke Corbin were the great flu research scholar athletes. On November 9th, the marching band cheerleading and football game in football went out in the game in the pouring rain, and even though our football team did not win, the school spirit turnout in the pouring rain was wonderful to see. On November 12th, which was Veterans Day, students from Lyman Hall participated in Community Day, where they raked leaves for the elderly. On November 16th, we had our homecoming dance. And on November 17th, the Music Parents Association had their craft fair, which was run by students and parent volunteers. And then same day, some kids from the Lyman Hall Orchestra and band also tried out for their regional ensemble groups. On Wednesday, our Power to Puff team took home the victory, winning 21 to 18. Today, girls' basketball tryouts and ice hockey tryouts have begun. Tonight, our marching band is having their end-of-the-year pasta dinner, celebrating their marching band season ending up fourth in the country. They are now transitioning into concert band and have an upcoming concert on December 19th. And at that concert, jazz band, chorus, and orchestra will also be performing. Tomorrow, our seniors have their instant decision day, which they can find out if they got accepted into Quinnipiac, Southern Central, or the University of New Haven. This coming Wednesday, we will also have office hours. On Wednesday night, Ag Ed will also be having their open house for interested 8th graders. On November 29th, the College and Career Center will be having their college road trip to Southern, and our mock trial team will be having their upcoming trial on December 10th. Thank you.
There's always a lot going on, and it's fun because we get to celebrate the girls' swim team here tonight, too. So congratulations to Lyman Hall. Lots of good things to celebrate. Mark T. Sheen, it's Marissa Garcia. Come on up. How are you? Good. Did you have a good break?
Yeah.
Good. What's going on at Sheen?
Okay, so in Sheen sports, boys' and girls' soccer made it to the second round of states. For swimming and dive, four individuals made it to states and three made it to SECs. In football, we currently have a record of 9 to 1, and they made it to states with the first round tomorrow against Wilcock. Football has been awarded SEC Tier 3 champs. Today, our winter sports started, which include indoor track, basketball, hockey, and swimming. Some activities that have been going on at Sheen. On October 22nd, MTS hosted Mr. Scott Dursel, where he gave a presentation about internet safety concepts, where the purpose of this presentation was to help our students be safe when using the internet. On October 30th, the band attended New England States competition, where they placed second with a score of 90.3. During the month of September, sorry, during the month of November, Sheen Student Council collected cans to donate for holiday giving, which help local families that don't have food for the holidays. We also collected cans at every single senior night game. On November 9th and November 10th, the MTS drama production performed "The Importance of Being Earnest." On November 12th, Student Council, Interact, Class Officers, and Outdoors Club went around raking leaves. On November 16th, we served breakfast to the veterans and had a Veterans Day assembly, where every grade went to a different presentation around the school from veterans who live here in Wallingford. On November 17th, Sheen held its annual homecoming, where we had over 500 students attend. On November 21st, our senior girls challenged Lyman Hall in the game of Power to Puff, where we fell short, but on Thanksgiving, our football team took home the Kareem Bowl win. On Thursday, Sheen will be inducting 20 new members into the National Honor Society. And on December 1st, Sheen will start its annual toy drive organized by Interact Club. On December 7th, we will be having our second blood drive of the year. And on December 18th, we will be having our winter concerts, which include performances by band, jazz band, string and sable chorus, and varsity chorus. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, lots going on and lots to celebrate. Congratulations to Sheen as well. Item 5, presentations and awards. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, thank you. We have a few awards tonight, and if you want to join me up here. First, we'd like to recognize some students from Moran Middle School. And actually, could I invite the students up if they're here this evening? Because I know there are some students who could come up here. Anybody who's here? Come on up. Come on up. You can make it up here. It's okay. We're not frightening. We're not scary people. It's all right. It's all right. So what I'm going to have, because I need your help, because I know what the final thing happened was, and you know, that's good for me, because it was at my favorite ballpark in the world. But the thing is, prior to getting to that part, do you mind sharing a little bit about what you did? And introduce yourself, okay?
I'm Elena Bielish. At the blood drive, we helped log in the people who were donating blood, and we helped give them snacks after they had donated the blood and made sure they were okay to go home.
Yeah, you pretty much just summed it up. Yeah, and my name is Sanjana Gade.
I'm Sarah Zoner.
I'm Paige Duffy.
You guys are modest, because why did you get recognized by the American Red Cross? Do you remember why you got recognized?
Well, over, like, a lot, like, we got a great number over the amount we had originally wanted to get. A lot, like, way more people donated blood.
So you were considered one of the largest summer events run by middle schools in the country for the donation of blood. So you had well exceeded the amount of donors that you were supposed to originally get. You had set an estimate, and you well exceeded that, and then you were recognized, and this is the part that I know some of you will enjoy. You were recognized at what stadium, the best stadium in the whole wide world? And it was on the screen Jumbotron and everything, of course, the night that I didn't have tickets. But what stadium was it? And don't say the F word.
Yankee Stadium.
Absolutely. At Yankee Stadium, weren't you on the big Jumbotron, right? Yep, because Mr. Piancetini sent me the picture. Jumbotron recognizing James H. Moran Middle School students for the incredible accomplishment. So we wanted to say thank you so much. I'm sorry that I put you on the spot to have to share, but every time students get up here, don't worry, you're next. You're next, people. But no, I gotta have you talk. It can't just be us talking and quickly giving out the awards, and nobody know why you got an award. All right? Can't do that. So congratulations. Thank you so much. This was an amazing honor and a great opportunity for our town, you as students, to learn all about the blood donation process, but also to activate our residents this summer. So we really, really appreciate it. So congratulations. I don't think this, not here. Correct. Trinity is here. No, you're Sarah. All right, so we also had two more students, and we just want to make sure that, and we recognize them on TV. So Maya Resin, all right, thank you, guys, and Finian Dubek. So thank you so much. We appreciate your help. We appreciate everything you did. Congratulations, and thank you to your families, too. Now we got, yeah, we have the swim team, and Ms. Neri, would you please come up? Come on up, Ms. Neri. We're going to put her on the spot, ladies, so we don't have to put you on the spot. Is that okay? Oh, very nice to meet you. All right, so even though our Giants did, they did what they usually do yesterday. See, whenever I go over to see Ms. Neri, we talk about Giants football. And I could not go over to Moran this morning, because I had my father, like, having a heart attack on, you know, in the living room complaining, and I called it. I said they were going to do what they did last year, and they lost. So it's all right. Yeah, it's all good. So I'm going to turn over to talk about our swim team.
Sorry, I didn't expect this. Yeah, well, we just, this is a group of girls, and we're missing just one today, which is, which is nice. We finished our season undefeated in Division 2, the SEC, our conference champions. So we're Division 2 champions for this year, undefeated in our Division 2, which was great. We had a few meets that were really close, right down to the wire, but every single person contributed and very proud of this group, because it was everybody, it was a whole team effort, which in an individual sport as swimming is, it's still, we needed the team to come together to get these wins that we got, and it was exciting. Very exciting. Okay, so these are the members of the swim team. Elizabeth Bartista. Sarah Beveridge, who is one of the captains. Elena Bielish. Jamie Boyce. Alyssa Severo. Christina Driscoll, another captain. Emma Duarte. Zoe Gallo. Faith Gambardella. Michaela Hinckley. Lindsay Hudson. Caroline Croweck. Ashley Lebadiva Lopez. Stephanie Lebadiva Lopez, another captain. Maeve Montante, another captain. Madison Nemec, who is not here tonight. Claire Ricotelli-Pastana. George Asweeney. Liliana Tangretti. Allison Wensel. And Paige Wensel. Just to mention, we did have two, three school records broken this year. Our medley relay was Beveridge, Sarah Beveridge, Christina Driscoll, Faith Gambardella, and Caroline Croweck. They also broke the 200 freestyle record, relay record. Caroline Croweck also broke a record and made all SEC in that event as well.
I would like to thank Mr. Corso also for coming tonight, for showing his support as building administrator. And thank you to both of you for your hard work. Yeah, well, I don't, oh, well, they better win that game. But ladies, great job. Congratulations. We really appreciate it. And I have to say, Coach Neri was so proud of you, but I already had beaten her to it, because we were already inviting you, and she's like, oh, maybe we, and I already beat her to it. So I'm just glad that you're here tonight, and all of you, with the exception of one, which is probably the first time ever we've recognized a team where they've all come and been able to be here. So congratulations, and thank you to the parents, because we know there's a lot of traveling, getting into practices, all those different opportunities. So we really thank you to all the families for your support of the students, too. We can't do it without you, and they can't do it without you. So thank you so much. Congratulations, again. And actually, I'm going to call Mr. Corso up, if I may. For our next award. So our next award is for someone who really did show an act of courage and tremendous selflessness recently. And we want to share a little bit with you, and I'm going to have Mr. Corso share this with you, and then call the student up to be recognized.
All right, so I'm just going to read the write-up that was sent to us to help us honor this young man. But he was driving in the left lane, going northbound on 91, right by exit 13. In Wallingford, when they saw the first car hit the railing and it left on the left of their lane, the car was two cars ahead of them. Right after the first car hit, an Escalade ran into the back of the first car, causing the car in front of us to hit the back of the Escalade and causing the driver to slam on the brakes and hit the guardrail to avoid collision with the other cars involved. At this point, I think this is where this young man really kind of separated himself from many of us that are here. Instead of worrying about himself, the car was not even in park yet. Colin leaped out of the car, ran to the Escalade, and he saw two people helping each other in the front seat, the passengers out of the car, and he rescued the little girls from the back of the seat of the car that started to have trouble breathing due to the exhaust fumes and the smoke caused by the accident. He says that somehow he felt enough strength to actually rip one of the seats out of the car that the little girls were stuck in. I think I was in shock. This is Audrey's sister, Aubrey's sister. And it took her a second to actually turn the car off, put her hazard lights on, and run over to where everyone was gathered to make sure everyone was all right, and then call 911. I think what we don't, you know, none of us know how we're going to respond in a situation. I'm sure Colin was unaware how he was going to respond in this situation. But he did what I think we hope all our children would do, and respond, and worry about others first. So without any concern for himself, and if you've ever been on 91, you should be concerned for yourself if you're outside of your vehicle. But without any thought, he went to the car, rescued a little girl from the backseat. The firefighters, at a later point, did share that they were concerned that had he not been able to get her out, that there could have been a much more fatal result. So Colin, as the Lyman Hall principal and a member of the Wallingford community, I'm proud to have you as a part of our community, and we really thank you for your actions on that day. So Colin, come on up.
So I don't know what words to say, except thank you for representing, you know, obviously, yourself first and foremost, and your family, in such a way that showed so much courage and so much selflessness. As Mr. Corso said, many of us don't know how we're going to act in those moments. We know how you're going to act. You showed that. You had no worries, except the fact that you were going to act in a way that was going to try to help someone else, help many others. So we just want to say thank you. I think that we are at these meetings quite often, and we hear how, you know, our, no offense, but your generation, students nowadays, are all worried about being connected to text messages and emailing each other and Instagram and all those things. You obviously showed that you, first of all, were paying attention, well, on the highway. And secondly, were willing to take action. We hear oftentimes that younger generations don't like to take action. You obviously showed that that's not the case. And I am very proud of the fact that I'm here standing next to what I would consider a hero tonight. So thank you for that. Congratulations, and to your family and to your siblings. Thank you.
You know, oftentimes, people ask Board of Ed members, you know, why do we do what we do? And this exemplifies it, this room full of wonderful young people and the outstanding accomplishments that they've achieved. So it really does make us very proud. This would be, I know you want to stay for this riveting meeting of ours, but if you do want to leave, this would be an ideal moment to extricate yourself. Again, congratulations to everybody. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 6, question and answer period. Are there any questions from the remaining audience? Any questions? Okay, I'll assume not. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of the Director of Food Service Contract?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're in executive session. Okay, we are back. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Have a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're out of executive session. Returning to our agenda, item 7 is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept agenda items 7.1 through 7.6?
So moved.
I have first and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have no items removed from the consent agenda, so item 8 is done. Nine correspondence. Mr. Reynolds, you're up.
Yes, we'd like to thank DonorsChoose.org for donating a number of culinary utensils to Dag Hammerschul Middle School Family and Consumer Science. Total value of the gift is $1,935. We also received a thank you note from Beth Rondo and family for a fruit basket that was sent to the family in memory of their father.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 10, committee report, starting with ACES. Mrs. Costelli, I believe that was your meeting.
Yes, I attended in Karen's absence. The ACES November meeting began with the approval of the October minutes, went on to the director's report, which consisted of six different topics, the first being the convocation video that was shared. That's always inspiring as you listen to the kids and the parents and the staff of all of the ACES community speak, and it's very heartwarming and touching. The regional calendars for the 2019-20 year and 2020-21 year were shared and approved. This is interesting. The state is still mandating that a regional calendar be created. However, towns may choose not to follow it. Yeah, well. The evaluation for non-certified administrators has been modified to align with the process that they're using for evaluating certified administrators. Tuitions, services, and transportation rates were reviewed and approved. The director noted that the ACES rates are all-inclusive of the tuition, services, and transportation. In some cracks, that is not the case, so sometimes you're comparing apples to oranges. Regarding the Wintergreen facilities update, ACES and Hamden are very far apart on price. Apparently, ACES is planning to purchase it or wants to purchase it. However, they feel they're asking way more than what the building is worth, and talks are continuing. There was also discussion about salary benefits for the non-bargaining employees that was reviewed and then approved. There will be a 2% salary increase plus step beginning July 1st, 2019. They will have the HDHP medical plan with a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, and they will contribute 17% of the premium unless they participate in the Wellness Plan, in which case their contribution will be 15%. The Wellness Plan means they must complete annual physical dental cleanings and screenings such as mammograms and colonoscopies. After five years of service, part-time hourly employees will have access to the same 403B match program currently available for the full-time non-bargaining employees. And the executive director will set aside $30,000 annually for tuition reimbursement. That's agency-wide, as well as setting aside $5,000 to reward excellent attendance agency-wide. They do sometimes have an attendance problem at ACES due to the significant amount of physical encounters that they have with some of these students. So sometimes the attendance isn't as good as they would hope to have it, but for justifiable reasons. The financial report was read and approved, and there was an overall improvement in that plan. The Human Resources Report was read and approved. The ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Program was approved. That's similar, that's the same one that we approved last time. And Policy 5141.4, which is reporting of child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault, was discussed with some modifications suggested and will be brought back to the next board meeting. I have a copy for you. I can give you, Karen.
Thank you.
Under curriculum instruction, it was announced that a new principal has been hired for ECA. The early head start monthly update was read and approved, and the next meeting is December 13th. Wallingford has 69 students attending ACES schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, concerns? Okay, 10.2, Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee. Mrs. Latour?
At their last Steering Committee meeting, the principal gave a very brief report about the things that have been going on in the last month at Wintergreen Magnet. And there was a presentation from a company called Right at School. It's a before-and-after-school provider. Wintergreen was looking at services for before-and-after-school care, and this company flew out to give a formal presentation. Upon conclusion of that, there was a quick update as to the facilities and the ongoing talks between ACES and Hamden, as Ms. Costelli reported.
Great, thanks. 10.3, school-to-career rep business think tank. Dr. Menzo, or, I know, I, I... 10.3, school-to-career rep business thing, Dr. Menzo, or, I know, I think she wants to put you on the spot.
All right, well, Ms. Costelli was there, so I do want to recognize the fact that she was there. We had a meeting back at the beginning, or beginning of November, or excuse me, yeah, middle of November, at which time we discussed updates regarding Operation STEM Town, as well as we went over our manufacturer's pipeline and some workforce development opportunities that are going on in the town, in the school district, working with our career and college specialists. So we gave updates on all of those opportunities, and we started talking a little bit about the grant that actually will be receiving the check tomorrow from AT&amp;T for our three semester pipeline program. So we started talking a little bit about those planning phases that we're going into. Also, Rob Covey shared a little bit more about the change in our curriculum planning guide, as well as our pathways, because we, again, would like to continue to encourage businesses to provide opportunities for unpaid internships for our students. We do have several students each year that participate in those in a wide range of resources and businesses across the town, and we like to continue to grow that. So I think those were the real highlights of that meeting. Our next meeting isn't until January.
Great, thank you. PTAC update, do you want to?
I'll move right into that.
Yeah, slide right in.
So PTAC, we met last Tuesday evening. At that meeting, we really had a thoughtful, very, very thoughtful discussion regarding the facility study. Great questions and just clarifications on the presentation that was provided to the Board of Education in November by the consultants. We tried to, you know, again, encourage people to come to the meeting, which is on December 10th, at Lyman Hall High School at 6:00 PM, to ask their questions, to provide more, you know, to get more information. We were asked about next steps, and I said that that's the meeting at which we'll decide as a board. You will decide as a board the next steps. But the intended next steps that were written into the RFP were that the company would take your narrowed-down selection and put it out as a survey to the community. And so I said that would be, that was what was originally planned. I said, you know, depending on how things move forward, that might still be the plan. It might be changed. But at this point, that is the plan. But again, the conversation was extremely, I thought it was a great conversation. I thought there was a lot of good questions, just thoughtful questions, considerations about where we are. And we had a good turnout at the meeting. Even though it was a day or two before Thanksgiving, we did have a good turnout. We also brought everybody up to speed on the Parent Choice Awards, which are this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Marti Sheen High School in the auditorium. And then we just kind of briefly went through the other items because we really spent a lot of time on the facility study just because we really want to give people an opportunity to ask whatever questions they had.
Great, thank you for the update. Excuse me, 10.5, Plan of Conservation Development.
Nothing new.
Nothing new, okay. 10.6, Food Service Strategic Plan Committee. Mr. Menzer.
We met on November 13th last month. We continue to update last year's results into our goals and our indicators. Talked about providing the free and reduced application during the report card area through principal packets. We talked about pursuing a breakfast pilot program with two elementary schools for next year. Our next meeting is January 15.
Great, thank you. Items 10.7 and 10.8 are put together for Mr. DePtoole, the stage lighting and renovation updates, as well as the fourth school window replacement.
Okay, the theater renovation, the stage update, that's nearing completion this week. It will be 100% complete, then we'll just be dealing with the closeout. The house curtains are being hung this week at three of the schools. They were manufactured wrong, had to be taken down and remanufactured. Lesson learned there. Didn't cost us anything. The window project for this year is also coming to a close. All items will be finished by the end of December. We still have six rooms at Parker Farms that need some break metal closures, which is basically window trim, just like your window at home. You have a little wood strip that goes around it to close it in. That's basically what needs to be done. There were some door issues. Those are being wrapped up. One of them was done yesterday. One of them's, I think, today. They should be all done this week. So we'll be moving on to next year.
Great, thank you. Item 11, old business. I do not believe we have any. Item 12, Mrs. Purcell, you are up.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, 12.1, mastery-based learning update. Mrs. Latour.
Thank you. So I'd like to report out that through the secondary report cards, 9 through 12, our habits of work standards were reported to parents for the first time in this manner. Our habits of work standards are preparation for learning, interactions with peers and adults, and engagement with learning. So all parents receive that as a part of their child's report card. And that will also take place for middle school when report cards go out next week. So parents will be able to see by class how their children are doing in that area. The first meeting of the district leadership team met prior to Thanksgiving, where they were able to touch base regarding the current steps that we're taking this year, not only with habits of work, but with posting learning targets on the board and labeling student work by indicator. Discussions regarding the timeline, which we do annually, were discussed with any revisions that need to be made and how that will be communicated out in the coming weeks to both our parent community, our student community, our teaching community, and to the Board of Education as well. We will meet again in January.
Thank you.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure.
While I have the benefit of being on camera, just in case there are parents watching, there was a conversation at the meeting regarding confusion regarding pathways and mastery-based learning. And we had a conversation about this at PTAC on last Tuesday night as well. And I just want to message this appropriately. There is no connection. In terms of pathways that were presented in the facility study and mastery-based learning, there is no connection whatsoever. The thing that might be confusing people is that when we talk about mastery-based learning, we talk about flexible pathways for students demonstrating mastery. That means differentiation. That means the product that the child is presenting, be it a video, be it an essay, be it whatever it may be, a project, a demonstration, whatever it is, that's the flexible pathway to demonstrating mastery. The pathways in the facility study, we're talking about really creating career pathways for students to take advantage of at the middle school and high school level. So I just want to make sure there's clarity there because that came up, and it has come up, and I've met with some people, you know, some parents, and I've had conversations, but I just wanted to clarify that, and we're going to continue to message that as we continue to go forward. So, thank you.
Thanks. I think that's important to clear that up. All right, 12.2, I'd like to make a motion to approve a 1.25% increase to the director of food services contract for the 2018-19 year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 13, Operations Committee. Mrs. Leback.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
The Operations Committee meeting took place on November 13th, 2018. The meeting minutes for the October 9th, 2018 meeting were approved. The Board of Education financial reports and the cafeteria financial reports for October 2018 were reviewed in committee and accepted under the consent agenda this evening. The financial reports for October 2018 indicated a projected surplus of $666,852 at this time. However, unanticipated costs could change this amount. The cafeteria financial reports for October 2018 indicated that there were two more serving days this October as compared to last October. A new balance sheet was introduced at this meeting per the request of board members. The new balance sheet indicates the balance in the cafeteria operating account, as well as the balance in the money market account. There has been a concerted effort to ensure that families that are entitled to free or reduced-cost lunches are receiving these benefits. An online system has been available since September 2018 to apply for these options. There have been increases in meals served per day at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. At the elementary school level, to improve service on all lunch lines, a new student ID scan program has been implemented. Additionally themed food items such as baked smile fries and Halloween nuggets have been introduced. At the high school level, the food truck was booked for the first time at Sheen. To offer items for non-meat-eating students, the high schools are featuring a falafel salad or sandwich. A new chicken and fry basket meal was created for middle school students and will be on the menu as a choice more frequently. To save money on food costs, the individual packet system for condiments is being replaced by pump dispensers. Finally, there were no reported customer service issues noted on the Wallingford Food Service Incident Tracking Log for October 2018.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 14, new business. I do not believe we have any. Item 15 is the administration report. Dr. Menzo.
Sure, just wanted to give you some information on some of the things that have gone on and are about to happen. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the parents involved with the Booster Club at Marti Sheen High School's football team. We had that unfortunate snow event a couple of weeks back on a Friday, and I was glad that we had a full day of school. But unfortunately, the field was not in condition that we could play that evening. However, they activated their volunteer resources to help shovel the field and get it into playing condition for the next day. I would also like to thank our maintenance department and our staff throughout the district that day for getting the buildings up and ready to run on a full schedule. I also would like to thank our public works department, who worked overnight. Unlike other, you know, towns, they, we did not have to have a delay that day, and it was really a tribute to the teamwork of the maintenance department and public works. So we are very grateful for that, but I also wanted to, again, thank the parents for their support. The game on Saturday was wonderful. It was a great day. Sheen won on that Saturday. I'd also like to thank all the families and their support for allowing us and supporting us in holding our Thanksgiving Day game on Thanksgiving Day. Thanksgiving Day, I'll get that right. While it was very cold, it was, I know it was really important to have it on that day because Sheen does have a playoff game tomorrow night, and it was difficult to postpone it. And again, I think the measures that the principals took with the athletic directors to get the heaters and to get the tents to provide the access to the Lyman Hall Gymnasium at halftime, that was all very, very helpful. So I do want to thank everyone. That just reminder that tomorrow night, there is a football game at Sheen. It's a state championship or playoff game. At the same time, unfortunately, because we don't know when these schedules are going to be working, we do have our parent budget forum at Board of Ed offices, 100 South Turnpike Road, where we would just give parents an opportunity to come in, ask questions, offer suggestions. Very informal. There's no agenda really, except the agenda of the people that attend. We've been doing this now for 10 years, or at least nine years. And so it's a great opportunity for Central Office, for myself, to hear a little bit about what's going on and what are the ideas that people may have prior to the budget being finalized, to be presented to the board, not until January 14th of 2019. I also would like to congratulate all the girls who played in Powderpuff. Another great game this year, and it's an intense environment, but it was a great event. And again, I would like to congratulate all the students and staff participating in that as well. The Parent Choice Awards, as I mentioned earlier, is Wednesday night. Tomorrow night is the Budget Forum. Wednesday night are the Parent Choice Awards at Marti Sheen High School at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. I also would like to thank those who were able to attend the STEM film that we had last week. I appreciate all the community that was able to attend. We had near capacity in one of the theaters, which I think was fantastic. We have gotten since then many inquiries of when we're going to show again. So we are looking to get it first on YouTube. I should have a thumb drive with it. It's a large file, as you can imagine. And then we'll take some time to upload it to YouTube. We'll be able to share that link and then also do some showings. I know the town library has offered to do a showing. I know we like to do one at, potentially at Hubcap, so we can offer different opportunities for people to see it. I think that it's a good example of what we're trying to accomplish as a town. We have a long way to go, but we are at least taking the first steps. I saw the two, two of the three filmmakers today, and they're very, still very, very excited about how it turned out. And I, again, shared our appreciation for their hard work on that project. Lastly, I would just like to invite the community to our holiday concerts that are coming up. And I'll just say that on the, you could, they're back-to-back. So on the 18th, you could go to Sheen High School at 7:00 PM, and on the 19th, you go to Lyman Hall High School at 7:00 PM. The middle school concerts are also going on. I know that DAGs is next Tuesday, and I'm not sure Moran's date tonight. I don't have that one off the top of my head. But again, you can consult our website if there are people watching this at home that would like to attend that concert. So again, this month, December, will be upon us very quickly. And so I figured I'd get those dates out for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menzo.
Excuse me, could I just add something?
Sure, of course.
I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that at the close of school that Friday, we had nine teachers come down and shovel snow as long as they could. And I'd like to thank the director of maintenance for coming down and offering what help he could as far as tarps and stuff to help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. So item 16 are announcements. Some of them have already been mentioned, but I'll go through them again. Tomorrow night, November 27th, is our parent budget forum, which is at our Board of Education conference room at 100 South Turnpike Road at 6:00 PM. Our curriculum instructional meeting, December 3rd, starts with a special Board of Education meeting at 5:30, and that'll go right into the Instruction Committee immediately following that meeting, again, at our board conference room. December 10th, Monday, December 10th, is our operations, which, as Dr. Menzo indicated, will spend some time talking about our secondary school facilities work and continuing that conversation. So in anticipation of having maybe bigger crowd for that meeting, that will be held at Lyman Hall High School Auditorium at 6:00 PM. And then our televised monthly meeting is Monday, December 17th, here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers, and that's going to start just a little bit earlier at 6:00 PM. And if anybody else, nothing else good for the order, this meeting's adjourned. Have a nice evening.